All right, it is 6:30. We will call our September council meeting to order at this time. Welcome to those in attendance, the council and those watching at home. At this time, we'll have the clerk call the roll.
Beaman.
Here.
Reckelberg.
Here.
Schley.
Here.
Dunbar.
Here.
DeBates.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Sikowitz.
Here.
Norrell.
Here.
Cummings.
Here.
All members present.
Thank you. At this time, everyone, please rise for the pledge of allegiance, and if you can remain standing after that for a prayer by our council president, Mike Cummings.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, let us pause for a moment of reflection. We are gathered here today as both the city council and as the people of Manitowoc, united by our shared care for this community. We are mindful of our sacred responsibilities to one another and to this city. We are aware of the world around us, a world grappling with sharp divides and political discord. In these challenging times, we are reminded of the importance of tolerance and respect for differing opinions. We give thanks for the unique spirit of Manitowoc, where we are not defined by political affiliations of the right or the left, but our shared humanity. We are defined by our willingness to communicate with one another, to listen to each other, and to establish common ground for the good of all. We humbly seek guidance as we begin this meeting. We ask for clarity and discernment for all our council members. Give them strength and wisdom to make good decisions that will serve our entire community. As we look to the year ahead, we pray for continued peace and prosperity for all the citizens of Manitowoc. May our city continue to be the beacon of civility and a testament to what can be accomplished when good people come together. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Council President Cummings. All right, first item on the agenda, we have Committee of the Whole, an appointment to fill District Four Alder Person vacancy. We do have a recommendation, but we do have to open up the floor for nominations, so we'll open up the floor, and if council president would like to make a recommendation for what Committee of the Whole recommended?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, I'd like to make a motion for Jody Bry to fill the vacancy as per the Committee of the Whole recommendation.
Thank you. Are there any other nominations? Going once, twice? Alder Reckelberg?
I was going to say, if there are no other, I would call the nomination session closed.
Closed and cast a unanimous ballot for Jody Bry to fill the remainder of the District Four Aldermanic term.
Yes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. There's no discussion on that, so all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Welcome. Congratulations, Alder Bry. If you could please come up, we'll have the city clerk officially swear you in, and you will be able to take your seat on the Manitowoc Common Council. Yep.
If you please raise your right hand, repeat after me. I, Jody Bry.
I, Jody Bry.
Having been appointed.
Having been appointed.
To the office of Alder Person District Four.
To the office of Alder Person District Four.
Swear that I will support.
Swear that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
Of said office to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God. Congratulations.
Alder Bry, if you would sign there, and I'll take the chair.
Congratulations, and I think it'll be an excellent testament to the work that your husband did for so many years. All right, we will move on. We have, I just want to note, there are signup sheets for anyone who's interested in speaking either at the public hearings, any of the public hearings, or for public input. If you are still interested, please sign up. We'll take those sheets in a couple minutes here as we prepare for the public hearings. We do have a couple of presentations, though. First, the first presentation is a final accounting report on Red Arrow Park project by Ed Hanson. Ed, if you'd like to come up to the podium.
Well, thank you, Mr. Mayor. You gave me 10 minutes, so I want to be on time. I know you've got important business this evening, and, and just as a quick introduction, my name is Ed Hanson, born and raised here in Manitowoc, graduated from Lincoln, 1967, and enlisted in the Army in 68, deployed to Vietnam in 69, '70, spent 11 years active, got out for 10 years. When I got back out in 1980, I enrolled at Silver Lake College, got my degree in four years, and it breaks my heart every time I, I drive out there because that's a big part of my history that's just gone. After 10 years, I joined the Wisconsin National Guard, Red Arrow, and 10 years, I went to school, we did summer camps, I did weekends, and then the whole world changed, 9/11. After 9/11, I had an opportunity to deploy to Iraq. After Iraq, I did a deployment to Afghanistan, and then I was chosen to be the Command Sergeant Major of the 32nd Red Arrow. And we started training in 2007, we deployed in 2009, I came back and retired in 2010, moved back to Manitowoc, this has always been my home, got settled into my house, and then one day, when I was at Lates, I looked over at Red Arrow Park, took a walk, and what I found were two rusty cannons, a big rock with a bronze plaque on it from the JC's, and a wooden sign that needed to be replaced. So I had three options. I could either dismiss it, not pay any attention, I could go to the city and ask them to take the Red Arrow off the sign, because there were, it, it was a memorial for soldiers that fought all the way from the Civil War, World War I, World War II, the Berlin Crisis, and then the Global War on Terror. And my third choice was to get involved, make a difference, and bring the story of the Red Arrow to Red Arrow Park. Luckily, I found a bunch of people that were already involved and wanted to do something with the park. I got with the city and got permission. We created a nonprofit, and some of you may remember, I came in here with this giant project we had. It was going to be granite and limestone, and the first thing we realized when I had the engineers look at the park, a good deal of the park is a dump. So in order to put these tons of limestone and granite on it would have entailed putting some massive base underneath it. We also looked at where the other ball field was in the park, and that was all sand and still the same problem. So what we decided, instead of one big beautiful memorial, we'd build a lot of small venues, and each of them telling a piece of the story about the Red Arrow from the Civil War to the current time. So we started raising funds, and through the help of the community, a number of different businesses, we got things going. But I don't want to spend a lot of time on that. What I would ask you is go to the park and take a walk around and read the signs, and you'll learn some of the history. But the reason I'm here today is to, to announce that the mission is complete. It's taken about 10 years. It was Operation Morning Sun, and that's M-O-U-R-I-N-G. And this last year, I had an anonymous donor that came forward with some additional funds, and we put the last pieces in early this spring, and we put the last sign in about two weeks ago. And then I had sold my house, I moved into River North, Jim had become my, my alderman, and I called Jim, and I said I'd like to speak maybe 10 minutes and close out the mission. And of course, tragedy struck, and my condolences. He was a good man, and he supported the park, and I will miss him, and I'm sure you will, and all of us will. So this, this spring, we got the last piece in it, and it's a bronze. We had the Steber family sponsor a bronze three years ago, and the issue was, we couldn't buy them here in the States, they were too expensive. And I talked to Skip Wallin, and he said, well, the, the problem is, they have to make a form, and the form costs way much more than the, the bronze that's poured in it. So I found a company in China that made these, and we ordered one, and I was a little bit apprehensive because we had to wire the money. And my feeling was, if this all went south, I was going to have to reimburse the family because I was the one that set this all up through the bank. And we wired the money. Luckily, we got the bronze in, and then the Red Arrow Veterans Association sponsored a beautiful bra, granite piece to put under it, so we had that in. And then their father, Al Steber, who was a World War II veteran of the Red Arrow, they had pictures, and we created a sign with his story and pictures of his deployment to the Pacific during the Second World War. So having a little bit of confidence, and now a little bit more money, we ordered another bronze. The original bronze for the Steber family was a soldier kneeling, and he was in the gear of a World War II soldier. The new one that we ordered, the sponsor wanted it to be a Global War on Terror uniform for the soldier, and there was one where he was presenting a triangular flag, which we usually do at funeral services, that's presented to the family. So we ordered it, but he also wanted it to sit on a red granite base. The problem is, you can't get red granite that size in the United States anymore. We had to order it from India, and it was very expensive, but the sponsor said, order it. So last fall, the bronze came in. This spring, the granite, red granite piece came in, and Eric Saville installed it and put the bronze on, and that was the last piece for the memorial. And then we put the sign up, and we tell the whole history of military honors. So that last piece completed the mission, and tonight, I want to just declare that Operation Morning Sun is complete. Now, I will continue to work with parks, to trim and edge, and make sure that the memorials throughout the park stay the way they should. One issue I do have, the city did finance a mural on the Richter Vinegar Building. It needs a little touch-up, and I volunteered, I'll buy the paint, if you get me a lift, I'll go up there and paint it, but it needs to be, if you've gone out to the park, that memorial is huge, and it overlooks the whole park, and it was just such a great addition. And I think the city had a, a program back then that, where they did murals throughout the community, and that was one of the first. Aaron Labonte projected that up on the wall and created it, and it's just, it's phenomenal. So I want to do a little thank you tonight. I'd like to give the mayor, the Red Arrow Across the Pacific, this was written by one of Manitowoc's own, if you know Mark D. Van Els. In his preface, he talks about being at Red Arrow Park as a young boy. This was printed last year, and it's an incredible history because it's not so much all of the battles and the maneuvering and the strategy, it's accounts of soldiers who were in the Red Arrow Division when they were called active duty at the beginning of World War II. So I'd like to present that to the mayor. Thank you. And I also have another copy for Andrew Dunbar. I met with him a couple of weeks ago at the park, and I would ask that, could you pass this around and share with the rest of the council?
Absolutely. Thank you.
And I'd also like to present to the city of Manitowoc, these five images that were created by Jason Crigg, and you know him well, and those are the same banners that the, I guess the streets put up every spring in the park, and I hope you could find a nice place in the building to, to put those. So with that being said, I'd like to thank the city for all their support. I'd like to thank Kurt Hall and Brock Wettenkamp, who have been very patient with me, and they've told me many times, Ed, Red Arrow Park is not the only park in Manitowoc. But they've been very helpful. We have a full-time person now. I've worked with him. He's made my job easier, and, and as long as I can continue to work in the park every summer, I will continue to do that. But again, thank you, and go to the park and check it out. It's a very, I think, a very fitting memorial. Many venues across the park to tell many, many stories. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ed, for all your work over the years. It is a beautiful park, and we'll be putting even more money into the beach and other areas to make it even more of a family-friendly and park to honor the Red Arrow Division. The next item is RAR West Art Museum 75th Anniversary. I'm going to invite up Greg Vadney, the Executive Director of the RAR West, for a proclamation honoring the 75 years. And Greg will say a little, a couple things, 10 minutes or less as well. Or a minute or lesser, well. It reads, "Whereas, the RAR West Art Museum, located in Manitowoc, Wisconsin, was established in 1950 by the city of Manitowoc as the RAR museum and civic center, and held its first Board of Directors meeting in that year, in fact, this week. Whereas, the RAR West has been a highly successful public museum, welcoming over 1 million visitors during its 75 years, and amassing one of Wisconsin's best permanent collections, featuring artwork by Georgia O'Keeffe, Andy Warhol, Pablo Picasso, Marc Chagall, and many other noted artists. Whereas, the museum is the site of the 1962 crash landing of Sputnik Russian spacecraft, and is the host of Sputnik Fest, one of Wisconsin's most beloved festivals, which happened last weekend. Whereas, the museum has curated over 850 exhibitions, including local, regional, national, and international art, has hosted over 45,000 youth artists in various student artistic exhibitions, and is one of only 23 museums in Wisconsin to be accredited by the American Alliance of Museums. Whereas, the RAR West Art Museum has been a creative hub for 75 years, showcasing and educating local artists, both professional and amateur. And whereas, in the last 15 years, the museum was named one of America's Best Small Town Art Museums by Travel and Leisure in USA Today, and has been featured by the Travel Channel, the BBC, Reader's Digest, the New York Times, Smithsonian Magazine, among other international and national media. Now therefore, I, Justin Nichols, Mayor of the city of Manitowoc, do hereby recognize and commend the RAR West Art Museum on the occasion of its 75th anniversary, and encourage all our citizens to celebrate its exceptional contributions to the arts, culture, and education in the city of Manitowoc and well beyond. Greg?
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I will keep it short, but 75 years did not happen by chance. The museum did not need to exist. So I have to thank so many groups of people that supported the museum through the years, first of which was the Board of Directors. As you mentioned, this Friday, we celebrate the On the Point 75th Anniversary. It was September the 19th of 1950 that the inaugural meeting happened of our Board of Directors set up by the city of Manitowoc. So from that point on, with names like John Nash and Guido Rar to our current Board of Directors, and I know we have some of our board members here, both former board members and current members who have done so much in leadership of the RAR West Art Museum, our staff, which is small but very strong, and we always punch above our weight, that through the years have taken the museum from being this little public museum here in Manitowoc and grown it into what we just heard is a nationally and internationally recognized institution. Our volunteers, we would not be able to function without them. And overall, thank you to the, the Board of Director, not only the Board of Directors, but to our city council. It is a unique thing, this public-private partnership that runs the RAR West Art Museum, and we're so thankful for the support that we get from the city of Manitowoc and the elected officials. So thank you. And our community, you know, the, the community from the time this place started in 1950, through the years in the 1970s, when, when the West families really started to take the museum and turbocharge it into what it is now, and then to this day, when we see support from the city, like our, our brand-new elevator that supports the historic Vilas RAR mansion, and private support that has enabled us to grow our east lawn and the museum collection through the years. We're so thankful that our community here believes in that same thing that Mrs. West believed, which is, great art, the best art, doesn't need to be in big cities. It can be in small cities, and it needs to be owned by that city, and it needs to be shared with every individual who resides there. So thank you to the mayor, thank you to city council, thank you to our community for supporting us for 75 years, and we're in a good place right now. We hope to be around for at least 75 more.
Thank you very much, Greg. Our next proclamation is for Fire Prevention Week. Bring up Battalion Chief Jeremy Wagner to accept this and also say a few words after. Reads, "Whereas, the city of Manitowoc is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all things living, all those living in and visiting Manitowoc. Whereas, fire remains a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and the presence of lithium batteries in many household devices introduces unique fire risks. Whereas, most of the electronics used in homes daily, including smartphones, tablets, laptops, power tools, e-bikes, e-scooters, and toys, are powered by lithium ion batteries, which if misused, damaged, or improperly charged, can overheat, start a fire, or explode. Whereas, the National Fire Protection Association reports an increase in battery-related fires, underscoring the need for public education on the safe use of lithium ion batteries. Whereas, residents should follow these key calls to action: buy only listed products, charge batteries safely, and recycle them responsibly to prevent battery-related fires. Whereas, lithium ion batteries store a large amount of energy in a small space. An improper use, such as overcharging, using off-brand chargers without safety certification, or exposing batteries to damage can result in fire or explosion. Whereas, the proper disposal and recycling of lithium ion batteries help prevent environmental hazards and reduce fire risks in the home and community. Whereas, Manitowoc Fire Rescue Department are dedicated to reducing the occurrences of fires through prevention, safety education, and community outreach. Whereas, the 2025 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Charge Into Fire Safety: Lithium Ion Batteries in Your Home," serves to remind us of the importance of using, charging, and recycling lithium ion batteries safely to reduce the risk of fires in homes and communities. Now therefore, I, Justin Nichols, Mayor of the city of Manitowoc, do hereby proclaim October 5th through the 11th, 2025, as Fire Prevention Week throughout the city of Manitowoc, and I urge all citizens of the city of Manitowoc to charge into fire safety and support the many public activities and efforts of Wisconsin's fire and emergency services. I don't think I've ever said lithium ion batteries as much in my life. Battalion Chief Wagner, if you would like to come up, accept the proclamation and say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor. I wrote something else, so I'm just going to read it, because that's, otherwise I talk really fast. I'm truly honored to accept this proclamation, recognizing Fire Safety Week here in the city of Manitowoc. On behalf of our entire team at Manitowoc Fire Rescue Department and the partners involved in this important initiative, I want to express our gratitude to Mayor Nichols, city council, and each and every one of you who are here in attendance to support this cause. I also want to thank all the local businesses that donate to us, that allow us to purchase public education materials. Fire safety is not just about protecting property, it's about protecting lives. Every year, fires cause untold damage, but it's the stories of lives saved through the prevention and preparation that truly make the difference, difference. That's why Fire Safety Week is crucial. It's a time to reflect, learn, and most importantly, take action. Whether it's checking your smoke alarms, teaching your children how to safely exit your home, or understanding the importance of fire extinguishers, these are small but impactful steps that we all can take to reduce risk and, and stay safe. This week is not just about taking personal action, it's also about community. It's about coming together as a city to share knowledge, support each other, and stand united in ensuring everyone knows how to respond in an emergency by continuing to educate and raise awareness. By continuing to educate and raise awareness, we are building a more resilient, safer environment for all our families and neighbors. I also want to acknowledge the hard work and dedication of our local firefighters, first responders, emergency personnel, who are out there every day protecting our community. These individuals are on the front lines, ready to serve and respond at a moment's notice, often putting their own safety at risk. We are deeply grateful for their service and commitment. I encourage each of you to use this week as an opportunity to start or refresh your own fire safety plans at home, and reach out to others who may not have access to these resources. Fire education can make all the difference, and it is everyone's responsibility to be informed and prepared. A couple of stats for you from last year, Manitowoc Fire Rescue Department, throughout our public education stuff, we did over 70 events, reaching 1,500 adults and over 3,800 kids. We reached out to 5,300 citizens in the city of Manitowoc. And I do want to thank the police department also. They have included us in a lot of their community outreach programs, so thank you for that. Thank you again for this important recognition. Let's make Fire Safety Week not just a time to raise awareness, but springboard for year-round action in keeping our community safe. Together, we can prevent a tragedy and protect the lives we hold dear. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. That concludes our presentations. We'll move on to Item G, Public Hearings, the first public hearing to be held at 6:31 or 6:55, "For the Purpose of Hearing Any and All Interested Parties in the Matter of a Proposed Street Vacation for an Unnamed Street Between Paul Road and Herman Road." We will have the clerk read the proof of publication.
Notice that this public hearing was published in the Herald Times Reporter on August 25th, August 31st, and September 8th.
Thank you. Adam Tagan, our Community Development Director.
Yes, so this resolution was originally put forth in front of the council back in July. That's just part of the whole state law process. Basically, a property owner approached the city to wonder if a portion of this road could be vacated. Upon researching, we determined that it did come from that property owner originally, so that's why the entire 30 feet would be going to them. However, city staff did feel that due to the size of this particular block, that keeping a 26-foot wide right-of-way was important for our future pedestrian connection if the city chose in the future. This did go through the planning commission for necessary public input. No comments were received at that time. As such, planning staff and the commission recommend approval of this vacation.
Thank you, Adam. Are there any questions from the council for Adam at this time? Seeing none, then this is a public hearing for this specific subject matter. We did not have anyone sign up. We did not have anyone sign up initially, so is there anyone interested in this public hearing once, twice? We'll close this public hearing. This will be at the end of the agenda under Plan Commission. Our next public hearing is for the purpose of hearing any and all interested parties in the matter of a request for a conditional use permit for the operation of a church and school located at nine sixteen Pine Street. We'll have the clerk read the proof of publication.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Herald Times Reporter on August thirty-first and September eighth.
Thank you. Adam?
All right, the subject property is Zone R four, Single and Two Family Residential District. Within that district, conditional use is required both for a church and a school. When staff researches this particular property, we cannot find a record of there ever being a conditional use on the property, which is not unusual for these older uses. But in order to expand, they do need to be brought into conformance, and that is why the request is before you this evening. So the request is basically to allow a two-story addition. Planning staff reviewed the request, recommended six conditions of approval. It went through Plan Commission and was recommended for approval unanimously by the commission.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Adam from the council at this time? Seeing none, then this is a public hearing. Nobody signed up for this one as well, so one last chance, going once, twice, for this public hearing. We'll close this public hearing, move to the third and final public hearing, for the purpose of hearing any and all interested parties in the matter of a request for conditional use permit for a transitional use temporary emergency warming shelter at seven oh-two State Street. We'll have the clerk read the proof of publication.
Notice of this public hearing was published in the Manitowoc Herald Times Reporter on August thirty-first and September eighth.
Thank you. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. This particular property is Zone B one Office Residential. As noted, the conditional use is for a transitional housing use. Our current zoning code does not specifically have a definition for a temporary warming shelter, so that is the most similar use, so that is why this conditional use is before you. They are proposing to continue operation of the warming shelter in a new location. Expected dates are November twelfth through April eleventh. Staff worked with the other departments to come up with a list of sixteen conditions for this particular request. The applicant has reviewed and accepted those conditions. At the public informational hearing at the Plan Commission, there were numerous people speaking in regards to this. The majority were speaking with concerns about the conditions, but ultimately, the Planning Commission recommended approval of the request with all sixteen conditions, and as to staff.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Adam at this time? Seeing none, then this is a public hearing. We do have a few people who signed up in advance. If you could just please state your name for the record, you'll be allowed five minutes. Timer, of course, isn't working, so you'll be allowed five minutes, and we start with Matthew Sauer.
Reverend Dr. Matthew Sauer, pastor at Manitowoc Cooperative Ministry, Executive Director of the Warming Shelter, President of our Parent Board, the Neighborhood of Manitowoc County. Mayor Nichols and council members, I want to begin by saying thank you. I know that it takes a lot of energy, and it's been given, not just you, but city employees and many members of our community have given a lot of energy into this process. I appreciate that you are willing to entertain thoughtful questions, and that you listen to the many voices in our community. And let me say that I know that it is not easy to listen to voices that can be critical, at times even angry at decisions that need to be made. However, in this case, I believe that we can agree that we all want the same thing: just and humane care for the unhoused in our city. So tonight, I want to come with gratitude, because you have the opportunity tonight to allow the warming shelter to be open for the twenty-five, twenty-six season. The conditions and the permit are not easy. They are not what I or our board would have chosen, but we are willing to accept them because our most urgent priority is that this November, that no one in Manitowoc is forced to be out on the streets. Every bed matters, every night of shelter matters, every life matters. At the same time, we are happy to say that we know this is not the final answer. These conditions reflect where we are today. They're not where we will be later, they are not where we need to go. But I'm grateful that we have been invited to be in the larger conversation on how we address unhoused in our city. The Manitowoc Warming Shelter cannot solve homelessness on its own, nor can the city. Together, we need to work on finding the long-term strategies for affordable housing, for supportive services, and for a community where no one is disposable. We are ready to be a partner in that work. This season, we will serve faithfully within the limits that have been set, but we will also keep looking forward with hope to the deeper solutions that Manitowoc needs. So for tonight, we are grateful. For tomorrow, we are committed, and for the long road ahead, we stand ready to walk with all of our community, and that includes you. For the sake of our neighbors and for our good city, thank you for your work.
Thank you for your comments. Next is Kenneth Walters.
My claim to fame is that I work with the Warming Shelter. The past three seasons, we've been open four hundred and fifty days total. I have been there four hundred and forty-six nights with my homeless brothers and sisters. So I think I speak from a position of strength. I'm also the President of the Steering Committee of the Warming Shelter. I'm also the volunteer scheduler for the shelter. So before I forget, if you want to volunteer at the shelter, and I suggest it strongly, you can get ahold of me, I'll get you slotted in so fast, it'll make your head spin. As President of the Steering Committee, I would like to repeat what I wrote in a public statement a few days ago, that we accept the conditions set upon us. Are we happy as can be? No. But we're looking to the future, as Pastor has just mentioned, and we have to keep ourselves focused on the future while serving the needs right now, today. How do you eat an elephant? One bite at a time. My dad used to say that so often, it just made me sick. But how do you solve the homeless problem? We're solving it, twelve people at a time, one night at a time. Every year that we've been open, we have had over twelve individuals each year come back and tell us that they're in a better situation, they're in a better place, and those are just the people that bothered to come back. So we strongly suspect that the number is much larger. So we're doing good, we want to continue doing good. About three years ago, in 2022, I came here, I sat in the back, like I like to do, and I listened to a lot of people talk about homeless, and I thought, well, that's very interesting. We gathered after the council voted, we gathered outside, and Pastor said, now we need to get serious. And we got serious, and we've been serious, and it's been incredible. Last week, when I was here, I had the opportunity to sit in one of your cushy chairs over there. And I was thinking, man, that must be great to have a cushy chair. But then I thought, well, maybe you need a cushy chair because your butt's been chewed all week long. And I thought, still, so I started thinking about that. But then I thought, what an opportunity you have. You have an opportunity to change lives for the better with just a simple vote. But it's not a simple vote, it's a complex issue. It's an issue being wrestled with all over the country. But here in Manitowoc, we are moving forward with a good idea. Now, nobody's given me the key to the city. I don't really expect I'll get one because I talk too much, but what you did three years ago was a key, and it unlocked an incredible opportunity for hundreds of volunteers, for well over a hundred of our homeless brothers and sisters. And it has let the warmth and the generosity and the friendship and the help of Manitowoc come rushing towards us, and it's helped us. Thank you in advance for your vote tonight, I look forward to it. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Next up is Debbie Holzbach. Oh. Okay. Are you Neil? Your name's on the list as well.
Going to be short and sweet. Just want to know that a lot of people don't choose to be homeless, and to be out on the streets in the wintertime sucks. A lot of people just had their rug pulled out from under their feet. They didn't have a choice, they lost their housing, they couldn't afford housing, and I just want to thank Pastor Matt and Ken for the work they do, and I'd like to thank all the volunteers that help at the homeless shelter. That's it.
Thank you. Next up is Dorothy Booten. Dorothy?
My name is Dorothy Booten. I am not new to volunteering, but the Warming Shelter is one of my very, very favorite places to volunteer. We all know the phrase, "Some of us are one or two paychecks away from being homeless", kind of sad. And we all know the story of the Christmas Carol. I just want to take a minute and run you just a portion of that. The charity ladies come and ask for funds to give their underprivileged people warmth, clothing, and a place to stay. And the charity ladies say, well, if we don't have the finances, if we don't get the resources, some of our people will die. And what does Scrooge say? If they would rather die than let them die, and decrease the surplus population. I only bring that up because thank you for listening to me, but also thank you for what Scrooge says. It is so sad. And sadly to say, it has happened here in our community. So we need you to reconsider our temporary stay at seven oh-two State Street. It's actually a win-win situation, as we will be utilizing a place in our community, and we will also be giving warmth and a place to stay for our homeless. We also know the story, or have heard it, of the little boy who was throwing starfish in the ocean, and somebody came up and said, hey, son, you're not going to save all those starfish? And he said, no, but if I save a few, I will be doing some good. That's what the Warming Shelter has done for three years, but we want to continue that. And we know the generosity of our community, the caring nature of our community. So we thank you for considering seven oh-two State Street as our temporary, as our seven oh-two State Street for our temporary situation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. That exhausts everyone who signed up in advance. We do have one previously submitted, that was just submitted today, from a Lucas Holt of Catholic Charities of the Diocese of Green Bay, voicing support for the Temporary Emergency Warming Shelter. Any there that exhausts once, twice?
There was one other email that came in around six o'clock that voiced support for this.
One other email? Okay, we'll get that on the record when we get that around six. Okay. All right, we'll get that on the record as well. All right, we will close this public hearing. We'll have the, what we'll do at this time is we'll have the clerk take up the three Plan Commission documents that were under the public hearing at this time.
We have four because there's a resolution and the ordinance.
Sounds good, we'll take up the Plan Commission documents, all of them at this time.
All right, so we have Document five thirty, which is a resolution approving the discontinuance of a portion of an unnamed street between Paul Road and Herman Road in the interest of the public pursuant to Wisconsin Statute sixty-six point one zero zero three, Paren four. Plan Commission returns same, recommending to adopt the resolution.
Council's pleasure on this resolution.
Move to adopt the committee's report, Mr. Mayor?
Second. Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document six eighty is an ordinance amending section twenty-two point zero ten of the municipal code entitled Official MAP Master Subdivision Plans to Discontinue a Portion of an Unnamed Street Between Paul Road and Herman Road. Plan Commission returns same, recommending to adopt the ordinance.
Council's pleasure on this ordinance.
Move to adopt the committee's report, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document six eighteen is Emmanuel Evangelical Lutheran Church, request for a conditional use permit for the operation of a church and school located at nine sixteen Pine Street. Plan Commission returns same, recommending to approve the issuance of a conditional use permit to Emmanuel Evangelical Lutheran Church for a church and school per the attached map.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move to adopt the committee's report, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document six nineteen, the Neighborhood of Manitowoc County Inc., conditional use permit, request for a transitional use temporary warming shelter at seven oh-two State Street. Plan Commission returns same, recommending to approve the issuance of a conditional use permit to the Neighborhood of Manitowoc County Inc. for the temporary establishment of a twelve-bed emergency housing warming shelter located at seven oh-two State Street.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move to adopt the committee's report, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
That's the last document? Why don't you just take that one up right away?
Document six twenty-six, miscellaneous dedications for street purposes, Michigan Avenue. Plan Commission returns same, recommending to instruct city staff to move forward with all facets of acquiring the additional Michigan Avenue right-of-way.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move for the adoption of the committee's report, Mr. Mayor?
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. We'll move then, thank you, that takes care of all the public hearings and Plan Commission. We'll move to public input. There was no one who signed up for public input previously, we'll open it up just in case. Once, twice, no previously submitted public input, so we will close public input. We'll move then to appointments. The first one is the election of Common Council Representative to the Plan Commission. This is a council appointment election, so I would look, I would open up the floor for nominations for any alder who is interested serving on the Plan Commission. Alderman Sitkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would move to nominate Alder Bill Schley to the Plan Commission.
Okay, Alderman Schley is nominated. Anyone else want to make a nomination? Once, twice? Not then, we'll close nominations. I'd look for a motion to elect Alderman Bill Schley by unanimous ballot to the Plan Commission.
So moved.
Second. Motion and a second by Nerrell. No discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations, Alderman Schley. Hope your Wednesdays, fourth Wednesdays are open.
They will be, and I'll bring my big shoes because I've got big shoes to fill.
Exactly. All right, we'll then move to standing committee appointments, now that we have a District Four alder representative, Alder Bry. I did, I chose not to do anything other than move up in finance, who was in what position, and appoint Alder Bry to the standing committees that Alder Bry was on as well. So just real quickly, I'll run down it, that's my rationale, so that's why the appointments are as they are. Finance, Eric Sitkowitz Chair, Todd Reckelberg Vice Chair, Bill Schley, Andrew Dunbar, and Jody Bry. Personnel, Eric Sitkowitz Chair, Bretner L. Vice Chair, Chad Beeman, Michael Cummings, and Andrew Dunbar. Public infrastructure, Bill Schley Chair, William DeBates Vice Chair, Bretner L., Brian Anderson, and Jody Bry. And public safety, Chad Beeman Chair, Todd Reckelberg Vice Chair, Michael Cummings, William DeBates, and Brian Anderson. I'd look for a motion to approve the new standing committee appointments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, who submitted the second? Schley? Anderson, okay. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Then we have the seats that Alder and Bry sat on as well that were vacant. The Plan Commission one has just been filled. Room tax commission, Eric Sitkowitz, Industrial Development Corporation, Michael Cummings, and Board of and Border Review, Michael Cummings. So again, there are a lot of alternates on Border Review, but I just did council president, and Alder Sitkowitz served on the Room Tax Commission in the past as well, so I'd look for a motion to approve those.
So moved.
Second. Motion, motion by Cummings, second by Nerrell, I think. We'll just do that. Quite discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. That does exhaust all the committees then at this point. Consent Agenda, Item J, anything to be removed from the consent agenda? Seeing none, then I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda as is.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Move to Item K, Committee Reports, and Committee the whole, Council President, Michael Cummings. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk has the documents.
We have Document 666, which is a report of the Special Events Committee recommending approval for a variety of special events subject to council action. Committee returns same, recommending approval.
Council's pleasure on this report.
I recommend approving the committee's report, Mr. Mayor.
There's a second by Alderman DeBates. Discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Anything else, Council President Cummings?
That would complete our business, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. We'll move then to the Finance Committee and Alderman Eric Sitkowitz's Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk has both our documents.
Document 637 is an Environmental Protection Agency Brownfield Community-Wide Assessment Grant Agreement for $500,000 from, $500,000 from EPA with $0 local match. Committee returns same, recommending to approve and enter into the agreement.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move for the adoption of the committee's report, Mr. Mayor.
Second. Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Didn't get any quotes for the CAFA News article, unfortunately. All right, next, next item on the agenda is nomination and election for a rec, an individual to serve on the Manitowoc Public Utilities Commission. Again, this is an election, so I will open up the floor for nominations for any individual. Alderman Sitkowitz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would nominate Scott McMeans to fill, or to fill a commission seat on the Public Utilities Commission.
There's a nomination, any other nominations? Any citizen of the city of Manitowoc can serve. Alderman Reckelberg.
If you don't hear any, I would move for unanimous consent to appoint or elect him to that position.
Sounds good, there is a motion and there is a second by Sitkowitz, that is for, so that's to close nominations and to cast unanimous ballots for Scott McMeans to the MPU Commission. Motion second, no discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. It's the last election we have for the night. Anything else, Alderman Sitkowitz?
That completes the finance business. Our next regularly scheduled meeting is Tuesday, October 7th, 5:30, Council Chambers.
Sounds good, we'll move right into Personnel Committee then, anything?
We have no report today from Personnel, other than our next regularly scheduled meeting is Monday, October 6th at 5:30 in Council Chambers.
Thank you. We'll move then to the Public Infrastructure Committee and Alderman Bill Schley is Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk has the documents.
We have Document 675, which is a state municipal financial agreement for the SASP3 Traffic Signal Rehabilitation Funding for the intersection of East Reed Avenue and Memorial Drive. Committee returns same, recommending to approve the agreement.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move to approve the agreement.
Second. Motion second, discussion. Alderman Schley.
Real quickly, this is simply to approve the agreement between the city and the state of Wisconsin, who will be providing 90% of 100% of the funding to improve our traffic signals on Memorial Drive and East Reed Avenue.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.
Document 678 is an agreement with Serenity Farms for tree removal at Silver Creek Park for a contract price of $38,885. Agreement 2510. Committee returns same, recommending to approve the agreement.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move to accept the committee's report.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Alderman Schley.
Real quickly again, this is the final approval with Serenity Farms to remove blighted ash trees in Silver Creek Park.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously. Anything else, Alderman Schley?
Nothing that exhausts our agenda. Our next meeting is October 1st at 6:30 PM. I unfortunately won't be present for that one, so Vice Chair, William DeBates, will be handling that right here in these chambers.
Sounds good, thank you. And we'll fi, finish up with the Public Safety Committee and Alderman Chad Beeman is Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The clerk has our documents.
We have Document 677, which is a request by ACE Building Service, Agent 4-Bake First National, for the approval of a demolition raising permit application for a structure that exceeds 100,000 cubic feet in area located at 810 Chicago Street. Committee returns same, recommending approval.
Council's pleasure on this report.
Move for the adoption of the committee's report.
Second.
Motion and a second, discussion. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried unanimously.